Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832. This is a regular school board meeting of the Madam Eide School District. It's Monday, March 24th, 2025, 7 o'clock PM. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call of attendance.
Director Dolman.
Here.
Director Peterson.
Here.
Adam Chair Stout.
Here.
Director Donna. Director Regan here. Director Whitson.
Approval of the agenda, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda with flexibility. Thank you, just because we might switch something around on the agenda. By Director Regan.
Second.
Seconded by Director Dolman. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, roll call please.
Director Dolman.
Yes.
Director Peterson.
Aye.
Adam Chair Stout.
Aye.
Director Regan, aye. Director Whitson.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And now for approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? By Director Dolman.
Second.
By Director Peterson. Any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Director Dolman.
Aye.
Director Peterson.
Aye.
Adam Chair Stout.
Aye.
Director Regan. Aye. Director Whitson.
Aye.
Now for the presentation. We'll start with recognition and discussion on the Zephyr Learning Showcase. So we had five groups with us this evening before our meeting started showcasing what they're working on at their, in their classes and at their, in their buildings. So we'll just go around and we'll share what stood out to us and highlight it.
Okay, I'll go quick. It's always fun to see the students kind of come out and not only show us what they're doing, but also be excited and passionate and have big smiles on their faces to tell us what they're working on. Goes without saying, the Cooking Club is always a highlight. Flowerless chocolate cake was pretty incredible. But two other quick things, it was really great to talk to the representatives from the Avid program and understand how they're putting their learning into real-life action and kind of see them think through what their career aspirations are and how they're, you know, kind of logically going to get to those aspirations. So that was super cool. And then just from the community education perspective, seeing or talking with the early childhood folks and understanding how they're implementing the letters training that we're going through right now and like hands-on functionally what that means for our early learners and what they're going through. I thought was fantastic and it reinforces kind of the decisions we've made as a leadership staff and how we're prioritizing literacy as a district. So, pretty cool.
I'll just add on, second to everything that's been said, it was fun to see all of that in action. I also really liked seeing the students with the science experiment, that real-world learning of getting their hands in the mud. And we have some water spills to prove it over here and it was just really fun to see where they were talking about erosion and really making those concepts come to life. Mr. Beggin, I loved the students who were coding on the Chromebooks. I was asking them more detail, it sounds like you have some interest in some kids learning how to actually write the code for that. So there, I think there's some coders out there in Madam Eide that want to maybe think about that in their future. So, so those were my highlights, so thank you.
Yeah, and sort of to, was it the math program or the math? What was the name of the group that did the coding? The Math Tutoring Program. One of the things I really loved about the Math Tutoring Program was how they were able to develop some flexible tools to help both them and other people in the district work on their math skills. So they could make the, it was built in a way that they could make it easier or harder or sort of whatever the case may be. So not only did they get to learn it, but they've actually provided a real-world tool that is flexible to meet the needs of various people at different math levels across the district. So I thought that was an inspiring way not for them to learn, but also to provide a wonderful solution to help their peers.
I'll just add, I, everything has really been covered, but it's the engaged learning. I think that we could see through all of the different presentations and really how it's, it's so much more than just what's being taught from a book or from a lecture, but really the experiences that they're getting in our building. So it was really great to see that and I just, I wish we could showcase it to everyone in the whole district. So, okay, thank you. Did you want to add anything?
No, I think you, I mean, I think you definitely covered it. Although I will, and so I had seen a number of these students in action before, but I hadn't had an opportunity to talk about the letters training also with our early childhood staff and just what they're seeing as a result. They've just, you know, they're just learning this year, next year's implementation and they've already, they're already able to talk about some of the things they're doing differently. So, so that was really, that was really fun, just the results they're seeing as well. So that was, that was fun for me, but otherwise I'll just say ditto to everything else because the engage, the engagement and the energy is always fun too.
Now, oh, we have a recognition, our Madam Eide Middle School recognition. Our principal from the middle school and then we will have Mr. Beggin come up. Welcome.
I just want to take a moment, I don't know if you saw that first slide or not, but this is Paul's 55th year here in Madam Eide at the middle school. And I just want to take a moment to recognize the multitude of ways there that Paul has been involved throughout his tenure and all of the lives that he has touched. We were doing some math today, I probably could have used some of the tutoring that was going on there. But in just like rough calculation, we feel like it's probably accurate to say that there's been over 12,000 students that he has been in contact within his 55 years here. So, and there's one thing that I just want to point out and say that during his time here, there's always been the one constant and that constant is that he is student-centered and student-focused. All of these roles that he has been in is a result of him being here for the kids and his dedication to give kids what they need. Partially what you saw in the Zephyr Showcase, recognizing that he has some very gifted learners in his math tutors and then helping them to provide for other students. So I'm just kind of a twofold, giving kids what they need. In addition to what you witnessed in the showcase tonight, I've also seen Paul give kids a pat on the back, an office, a place to cry in when needed. He is an academic advocate. He also offers some tough love when necessary. He pushes kids to challenge themselves and he's not afraid to offer a dad joke here or there. Paul does all of this because he believes in kids. He notices strengths and interests and guides students to pursue them, such as what you saw tonight with the programming and the coding. Paul has always been very involved with the ski club and skiing. He's also been part of travels with students. And he, and his lunch group is another area where you notice that he has strengths and interests. And in fact, in his lunch, or in his lunch group that he meets with on a weekly basis, he has also made connections between kids where one of those students is now kind of tutoring and helping another classmate with some math in there as well. So the kids come together because they kind of have weaknesses and needs in one area and out of those weaknesses, there was a strength that was found and a bond between a couple boys. The other thing that I appreciate about Paul is his expectations are high and he gets the kids to meet those expectations. He has a way of making sure that through their academics, he is supporting them and advocating for them. And he'll go so far as to say, "This cafeteria is a little bit out of control and I'm going to go into all of the classrooms and we're going to talk about how to behave in the cafeteria." So he kind of meeting all of those needs. Paul does a great job of helping to create systems that support kids and help them to prove themselves, to prove to themselves that they are capable. In addition to working with students, Paul is a valuable colleague and has seen trends, has seen trends come and go and come and go again and maybe again. He continually moves forward using research and data in best practice for what we know at that moment and in that, that trend that's coming or going. And Paul consistently shows his growth mindset. I've witnessed him support the adults in the building in much the same way that he supports the students, adult, and adults, when I'm saying adults, I mean staff as well as parents. He is more than willing to celebrate with adults, has great empathy, advise, having those conversations with parents where they just really kind of want some parental advice or what should I do? He offers encouragement and always has an open door. It is really fitting to acknowledge Paul tonight on the night that is the Zephyr Showcase. And while he has great pride in watching his students and listening to the conversations that they're having, it was also very fun for me to see you shine, Paul, and recognize you.
Well, I, I just can't, we're going to take a picture with you in a minute, but I don't, you know, let's reemphasize 55 years. I mean, honestly, Paul, we, you know, that's just outstanding. But I also want to just comment on your student-centeredness. I mean, like everything about you is just, you really are about the kids and we hear it, I hear it when you're scheduling, I hear it when you're talking with kids, I hear it when you're talking with teachers. I hear it when you're grabbing data because you're excited about data, you know, that speaks to me. So I mean, like in all ways, you are creating systems that are really going to support kids and you're doing it with middle school kids. And you've been with middle school kids forever and just how special that is and how much you really enjoy and being there is really important to us as well. So thank you for all, all of that, Paul.
Can I just make a quick comment? So, Mr. Beggin, your ski club back when I was in middle school, it's something that a lot of my friends and I still talk about, so I imagine that it's had a countless, or it's had an effect and an impact on countless Madam Eide graduates over the years. And it's come full circle with my sixth grader now having the exact same experience and creating the same memories and friends that we all did. And to your, to your point, Jackie, over 55 years of doing that, it's amazing. And that's what I think really differentiates our district is people like you investing in the kids and being student-centered and it means a lot, so thank you very much.
I just want to echo, I, you are one of those people who make our district so amazing. And I just, my kids didn't really have any interaction with you because of, you know, it's just the way things worked out. And I know from so many other people, that's just who you are. And I, it's just one of those things when we think about our district and the staff who make it so great and you are one of those. So thank you so much for caring so much for all the people in the building.
I just, not only did you survive 55 years, but you thrived 55 years. I mean, I think I'm coming up on my year 30 and I just, like, it's amazing to think about what you've seen in the change in education in 55 years. And so thank you for all that you've done and I hope that, you know, it seems like you'll always be about the students no matter what you do in life, like whether that's younger kids or grandkids or whatever that might be. But thanks so much for what you've done for this entire community for so many decades, so thank you.
Now we're going to get a picture.
While you come up, I will clarify, I've only done ski club for 50 years.
Thank you so much. Now we move on to our report from our student row. Max mentioned.
Well, we're coming to the end of these meetings here, it's getting real close. On student council, biggest thing we're planning right now is prom, which will be on the boat again in Stillwater, that's always super fun. We're also planning for Spring Parents Night Out, which is on the day of the May field on April 11th, from 5 to 9, so dump your kids off. They do have to be fifth grade and under, don't try that again, people. At Wildwood, the first graders had a concert into the Wildwoods. There's some really cute pictures on the E-News if you want to take a look at those. Also, Wildwood, the Spring Fling is coming up on May 16th, which is just a big carnival with food trucks and a lot more, it's a ton of fun. At OH Anderson, this whole month has been I Love to Read Month. There have been book, weekly book club meetings. There have been book brackets, just like March Madness, which just started and ended, no more perfect brackets sadly. And there have been dress-up days all month. And a fifth grader, Kira Evans, placed top 50 in the Twin Cities Spelling Bee, which have let her move on to the regionals in St. Paul. And also in middle school, Jonathan Palmquist, who won our spelling bee, also placed top 50 and moved on to regionals. In the high school, we had a lot of sports events happen. Evan McGuire won state pretty easily, didn't give him any points that he didn't want to. Aiden Carlson also placed fourth in state for wrestling. And Ida Chom and Audrey Carlson, my bad, are advancing to the International Career Development Conference for DECA, which is the business club at the high school. And boys hockey made it to state, but sadly were eliminated on the first round. Better luck next year. And we actually have a team moving on to nationals for NASA Hunch in Texas, which is really, really exciting. And we still have our two real-world teams flying into nationals this May. And biggest thing coming up is the ACT test for juniors is on April 8th. So get them signed up and studied up. Because I know one of my friends forgot to sign up and he just doesn't have the score now. So it's a big deal. Otherwise, not too many big events coming up and that's all for now.
I have to say, Max, I'm going to miss the student updates. You always make it fun, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do only have a few more meetings with Max. Okay, now, once again, Max covered a few of these things, but I will, I'll still go through. Just again, some things that are happening around the district that, and awards and noteworthy news. Again, Max hit some of those. Director Donna and I did go to the Capitol today for AMSD Day at the Capitol, so we'll just share a couple things that we learned and then we have some upcoming events. So I think, you know, for I Love to Read Month, we had a number of guest readers from the high school visit OHA Elementary. And, and I'm sorry, I'm just going to slide, well, here, you know what I'm going to do? Hard for me to see through. There we go, thank you, I'm sorry. Okay. So as part of their I Love to Read Month, they had, our high school students came to help with the, they had 20 special guest readers. Sure, that would be great, thanks. So this is coming up on April 11th. We have a career internship and volunteer fair. You've seen the call for volunteers come out and I don't know how, we're still looking in particular, we have quite a few people who have signed up to read resumes and give feedback on resumes. We are looking for some more, just businesses who want to talk about their, their business, maybe recruit some volunteers or interns. So if you know of anyone, please spread the word. That'd be at the high school. This is the first time we've done this and it's through community ed and, well, and our communications director together are working on putting something together for high school students. Our middle school, I believe on the 28th, is doing the career fair again, so that's coming up as well.
Barb, was this because of our Portrait of a Graduate work? Is this one of the outcomes from that?
I, I don't know that it's, I mean, it's certainly consistent with our Portrait of a Graduate work and I think we got some interest and names because of all the advertisement, advertising we did around Portrait of a Graduate. So it is, is, it goes alongside that work for sure. So, community ed, I hope you all got that catalog in the mail, maybe more than one. There are a couple people that did, so anyway, sorry to joke about that. But community ed catalog is out and things are open, so get in there and sign up. Look at, we had 1,000 enrollments on the first day, a new record. Annual report is also out. And it's something that we annually mail to district residents, staff and families. And so you can look in there and it has current district data and showcases all the academic. Copies if you haven't gotten one. So you've heard, we've talked about it, Mr. Collins, we've recognized him a couple of times. He's our Teacher of the Year and he has made, moved on to become a Teacher of the Year semifinalist. So we're looking forward to hearing how he does as he moves forward, we're very proud of him. So, Max mentioned, we have a couple of students going to the international competition, so that's exciting. This is our second year participating in DECA, so to have, to have somebody going each year the first of, our first two years with DECA, it's pretty exciting. Here it is again, Max, Max also highlighted our NASA Hunch team that is moving on. And we also had our Varsity Esports team brought home three championships at the Varsity League State Finals. And so this is, we've had an esports team, I don't know if we've had it consistently every year for the past few years or if it's been on and off, but we have had an esports team before, but not this. Okay, thank you. And so to, to win three championships is pretty impressive. So congratulations to all of those students. And once again, more state, state winners. Evan McGuire winning easily is what we talked about, winning the state championship, so congratulations. You might not know that also the Madam Eide Stillwater adapted floor hockey team came in second in the State High School League tournament, so congratulations to them. We also had our hockey team, which Max highlighted for me. The middle school science bowl, I believe these students came and presented at a Zephyr Learning Showcase another time, I remember being quizzed by one of them in fact, so I'm sure they did. So they had, they participated in the state science bowl and took a couple impressive wins during the competition. So congratulate, and that's again, a newer, a newer team for us. The high school math team won the conference championship and we had one student finish first in the conference and compete at the state meet on March 10th. Keep on going, middle school mathematicians participated in the Math Masters Regional Competition. And so you can see all of the accomplishments there. Jackson and Parker placed in the top 15 for their high scores on the math background. And then, direct, as I mentioned before, Director Donna and I did participate in AMSD Day at the Capitol today. And we had an opportunity to hear from Senate and House Education Finance Committee leaders. And also Senator Housley met with us as well and we got a chance to talk a little bit about our district facilities needs that we continue to talk about so that she understands what it is, what our challenges are and how we can just advocate for some assistance from, at the state level too. I don't know, do we want to talk about the theme of, of the day, which was?
Frustrating.
Yeah, a lot of frustrated legislators because of, there's lots to do and not a lot to do with.
No time.
No money.
No money, yeah. So, restric.
Well, so I guess that's it, I guess that's it, yeah.
Yeah, I wish I could, we could be more positive, but it's really a tough dynamic to do any business. So, I don't think we can hang our hat on anything.
Did they share why there's no money? I mean, did they get into that at all or people are just walking around frustrated?
Depends on who you ask.
Fingers will be pointed.
Gotcha, we don't need to go into political stuff now, just curious if they're going to.
There used to be a huge surplus in the state and now it's all gone. We have a huge deficit.
Not quite.
Not quite, but it's coming.
It's coming, yeah.
All the surplus is completely gone.
Yeah, and everyone's in the same boat.
Yes, lots of, lots of districts talking about going out for levies, referendums, deficits, you know, all of that. It's a common, budget cuts, it's a common theme everywhere we talk to people. So, there, I, I feel like I heard that there's some interest in rolling back some of the unfunded mandates that were handed to us. But depends on who you ask, which of those should be rolled back. So I don't, I don't know where that'll, I don't know where that'll go. So we stayed consistent with talking about facility needs, LTFM. There is a bill, I did look it up after, talked to Senator Housley about kind of some more flexibility with the LTFM dollars, but not necessarily more money, but more flexibility, which would be helpful to us and included safety and security as being an allowable LTFM, even if, you know, expenditure. So, so that might be one that we want to, to advocate for.
And that is already a bill?
It, there is, it has, I don't know if it's been introduced yet, I did find it when I went looking to see if anyone had proposed. I imagine it's been introduced to committee, but I'd have to go back and look.
But it has a bill number.
Oh, okay. I think I saw it. Yeah. I don't recall any updates, but I remember seeing it. In fact, I thought you might have, you've been sharing. Maybe I did share it with you and with the long list of all my other bills, okay, that we shared, yeah. So, so that might be one that we'd want to look at. Again, no money, but flexibility, so that would be worthwhile. Anything else you wanted to highlight from our day? And just some upcoming events, that, let's not forget the Zephyr Gala coming up on the 11th and that's also the Day of the Career and Volunteer Fair at the high school. So thinking about those things would be, I hope to see you at the Zephyr Gala and also if you're able to spread the, spread the word about the high school career internship and volunteer fair, we could really use your help on that. Food Truck Friday, May 9th. You know we love Food Truck Friday, so that's my update.
What year is prom, do you know? That's all, I was just curious.
I, I don't know, I'd have to look it up.
I said it two weeks ago. Three weeks ago.
May 10th?
9th is Food Truck.
All right, that's all you need to know.
The important dates.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you for that, very good update. Okay, discussion items. We'll just look at our board member calendar. Does anyone have anything they want to point out on the calendar? I do want to, this isn't on our calendar, but we do have tours through, for the 916 buildings and there's multiple ones and Leslie sent on an email, so. So the first one is this Wednesday. There's several. It is so enlightening when you go on these tours. The 916, which of course we are a part of, they offer everything from early ed to career and tech to, there's so many different things. So anyway, it's just a really impressive program. But when you get to see it firsthand, it really kind of cements in your mind what, what they're doing and, and how they are partners to us. So anyway, that's not on our calendar, but I wanted to call out those, those upcoming tours.
I would yes, sand that piece because I've been on a few of those and it's been really great. And the other thing is I felt like I understood what 916 was, but not really until I saw it. So I thought that was really great. So if you haven't had a chance, get over to some of those. Because everything from ambulatory care to diesel mechanics to all sorts of things. It's, there's a wide variety of things that you'll see.
And, okay. Anything else? Okay, then we'll move on to action items. So we'll start with our approval of donations and grants for February 2025 totaling $6,449.45. And donations and grants for January 2025 totaling $46,122.69. So I have a motion. By Director Domon.
Aye.
Seconded by Director Regan. Any discussion? All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district and are used towards the wishes of the donor. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Director Domon?
Yes. Aye, sorry.
Director Peterson?
Aye.
Director Donna?
Aye.
Director Regan, aye. Director Whitson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to switch and go to item C here. So approval of budget revisions 2024, 2025. And we'll have our finance director, Tim Erickson.
Good evening. So we are in our budget revision cycle at this point, so for 24, 25. And I'll jump into it. We have very, very little change, but the change is good. It's positive. Will be revenues and expenditure, revenue is going up, expenditure is going down. So as we, we'll just jump into it. You know, when we look at these reasons for this is first of all, we went back and in March and June, you approved a budget. In March and June, there's a lot of things that are unknown. We had at that point, one of our seven groups, contract groups was settled. And the others were still left to go through. So, so that's one of the things. Enrollment changes, we've made some projections, you know, we're always looking at enrollment. And so we made some different enrollment projections based on, based on some of the numbers we were seeing. You know, and then we've got changes to assumptions and some of our estimates. So there's a lot of different things that go into this between the time you approve that budget in June and up until now. So as I said, revisions in this year, we're looking at an increase of 106,000 or a 0.21% increase in revenue. And then a decrease of expenses of 109,000 or a 2.1% decrease in expenditures from that original budget. So we're to the good about $215 million. So that's good.
$215,000.
Or 215,000. Whoa, yeah, where'd that come from? I guess this is what I was wishing for as listening to the legislative update. That's what I was wishing for.
Checking if we're paying attention.
Yeah. You gotta watch me. So we look at the, what are the key drivers of this? So as I mentioned before, student enrollment estimates. So that's changing aid and property tax. So that's a reduction of about 193,000. Special education aid, that's always a very difficult one to hit. The state comes out with some estimates throughout the year. So that's kind of based on what, what their estimates are saying, but still pretty conservative. Because we always don't know until we get after sometime, very close or after the end of the year, what exactly that's going to wind up to be. But pretty confident on that one with, with 572 as the increase. But I would, it could, it could go higher than that. But again, that's one of those where we just don't have enough information that, from the state. So various levies and aids, those get adjusted. There are adjustments that happen after you pass the budget. And so those, those different, several different aids and levies get adjusted. So those are just adjustments there. So we added a 174,000. And then federal aid, again, for our district, that's a relatively small piece of revenue. Because it's based on free and reduced meal counts. And so when we looked at federal aid, we needed to push that down by about 65,000. And then a bigger one is the long-term facility maintenance revenue. So that one is a result of we, we, we've had increased debt service payments. So those really have to shift and they go, hey, wind up, we, we wind up accounting for those in our debt service fund. And it's a dollar for dollar reduction almost in the aid that goes into the general fund. So that's a, so that one was 382,000. So those are the, those are the revenue changes. Any questions? Okay, I'll keep going. On the expenditure side of things, like I mentioned, for salaries, wages and benefits, those are all a result of settling contracts. And being able to know where, where we are with those expenses. Purchased services, we look at some trend history there. And we look at tech, in the areas of technology, utilities, legal and insurance. So we felt comfortable pushing those down a little bit more. And supplies, various across the board increases projecting out where we think will be, so about 42,000. And then some capital expenditures down about 235,000. And that's just things like if we're purchasing a vehicle, did we need to purchase one? Well, no, we didn't. So we pushed that down for this year. So any questions on the expenditures? Okay. And then when we look at where, where we think we're going to wind up with this, our unassigned fund balance would be 3,616,000. And because we have now, we have this assigned fund balance for budget deficit, we need to look at those two together. So this is, this is kind of new here. So when we have a deficit budget, we're required to put an assigned fund balance in if it's available. Some districts don't even have enough available to do that. But we're required to put in an assigned part of that, or assign that budget deficit into the assigned fund balance. So when we look at that, we've got a total of about 5,918,000. And as a percentage of expenditures, it's about 11.5%. Any questions there?
How did that change from, because I thought we were already at 11.5% for unassigned. So how did this required assigned fund balance affect that?
Well, we were, we're always looking at it. I didn't add that in tonight, but we're always, when we're calculating that fund balance, that assigned fund balances, I always take both of those together.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Yep, okay. Any other questions?
And then board actions required?
Yes, so let's go ahead, we'll, we'll take action, but if you want to stick around, we'll
Yep, you bet.
Quickly and then move to the next. All right, do I have a motion to approve the budget revisions for 2024, 2025?
So moved.
By Director Whitson.
Aye.
Seconded by Director Domon. Roll call vote, please.
Director Domon?
Aye.
Director Peterson?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Regan, aye. Director Whitson?
Aye.
Director Stout?
Aye.
Motion. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move to approval of the budget reduction updates, 2025, 2026.
So this is something you've seen several times. So this one has changed. Again, we revised this one and I'll just run through, mainly focus on the areas that have changed. So proposed use of fund balance, we're proposing in this, this revision here to use about $760,000 of fund balance. And that would keep us, our projected fund balance would be about just over 8%. And that's a slight change from where we were previously last month in the projection. I think it was about 8.28%. Again, when we look at that, 8% represents 29 days of cash on hand to pay, pay expenses. So the board policy isn't extremely high or overly high. You know, it's just, it's, you know, 8%. A lot of districts have an 8% policy. And so some have a higher policy than that and some have lower. It just depends on the district. So we go to the next page. So some of the, some of the differences here in this, in the revenues and adjustments modification is we do, we do have a 5% increase in activity fees for this one. So that would generate approximately 14,000. And that was, we had, we had that 20% in, they gave us some feedback and we said, hey, okay, wow, we, we reduced it down. So we had a, that was a $56,000 increase before. So we knocked it down to 14. In addition, we have heard a request to look at allowing senior citizens to get into gate without a charge.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that because there's another request that we talked about. So do you want to, why don't you go through this whole revenue and then let's go back to that?
Okay, sure, sounds good. So then we had, you know, returning the class sizes of those pre-pandemic levels for K5. We've had an adjustment for eighth grade. We look at the core class size based on the resident and open enrollments there. So that one, we're, we're pushing, we're adding a section at the eighth grade level. So revenue estimate to account for that is up to 561,000 for that opening, for those additional open enrollment and additional resident kids. Community education cost sharing, that one increased about $8,000. That's the, that's service, some service costs of an educator that will be doing some coaching and letters training with the, with the staff and the community ad fund. So the next one on the expense adjustments, again, reducing the number of sections in elementary based on that current enrollment. So that's 160,000. The high school, that one reduced since you've last seen this, that one, there's another reduction of a 0.6 FTE. So a little, little bit more than a halftime FTE. And that's due to the enrollment numbers at ninth grade. And so when we look at both the middle school, that addition there, that section that's being added there. And the additional reduction at the high school is 112. Some of the other, the other staffing, so again, the facilities and ground staff, that's still in there as a special education. There's, there's an add of about $24,000 for special education. It's a 0.25% increase in the FTE. And then we restructure technology support, that's been there before. And redo, reduction of extra service contracts, so that's $100,000. So any questions so far?
A question is on the 0.6, is that the, this year's current ninth grade or next school year's ninth grade?
It's based on, based on estimates for next year.
That's what I thought, okay. That's what I thought.
Good question. Okay, well, we look at purchased services, the estimate is 90,500. Slight, a slight, slight change. It was 91,000 before. So again, it's remained relatively unchanged. Under the reduction for transportation costs and athletics and activities, that still stands. And that's that running, reducing the number of buses that were going to each, each event. So that's 20,000. And what was removed off of here is, again, based on the feedback that you gave us. There was a, a small reduction of about $4,500 for low, you know, low enrollment in certain activities. So that one, we just took that out. Supply reductions, again, that's the same. And then other reductions in, in teaching and learning, including curriculum resource, sources and planning. And that one is, is about the same as well. So, okay. So then you can kind of see how all of these revenue adjustments and expense adjustments come together. And we've got, we get down to that, the budget, projected budget deficit at the bottom, $2 million. And so we'd be looking at 759,000, roughly 760,000 to dip into fund balance, which would leave us at a little over 8%. So there is some flexibility here. And it's, if you remember, if you recall, when I've talked about getting the state approval for a three-year, run a three-year deficit in our operating capital restricted fund balance, that gives us some flexibility. Like I said, that's kind of like a loan and we have to pay it back over three years. And so those are things that I can kind of play with to help us bridge gaps in, in our fund balance network. So that, that helps.
So is it, there's not, where is it that, is the 215,000 that we're going to have as a surplus this year, is that reflected in this?
That one, that one is not. So what, when that's going to be reflected is in the projections. And I'll bring on the 14th, we have a study session. And so I'm going to bring another, you know, three-year projection to look at. So we'll have all of that updated in there. So, yeah.
If it were, were reflected here, would our fund balance be a little higher?
It would be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is all based on the current, the current approved budget.
Yep, yep, okay, thank you. Other questions? Want to go back to the fees?
Yeah, let's go back to the fees. So you'll recall that when we talked about the increase in activity fees, when we had the 20%. And we were going to remove it altogether, but we also had a couple of other things come up that we thought we should talk about together and have the full context for this. So we received some feedback about, we do have, so to come to a state high school league game that we are, at our school, we do charge an entry fee. And for senior citizens that are within our community, they are able to get a pass that's called the Golden, is it Golden something? Golden Zephyr Pass to allow them to enter for free. So anyone who is a resident is able to get that Golden Zephyr Pass. However, it was brought up that, the idea of allowing any senior citizen to be so grandparents who don't live in the community. We went back and we looked at sales from this year and just kind of gave an estimate of, that would be about $10,000 of revenue approximately, based on so far this year and projecting. So we thought, you know, that's, that's a budget impact as well. Director Whitson also asked about students. And did you want to speak to that a little bit? You asked me about students as well.
Yeah, sure. The same idea applies to having the opportunity for students to attend their peers' games for free as well. There was something, actually, I think I shared that before I was even on the board that last fall, provided some suggestions that I think about my students, my, my kids who want to see their peers, but they don't want to play six or seven bucks every time they want to run into the watch volleyball for a few minutes, right? So the idea of having, providing and encouragement, right? Reducing the barriers for our students to encourage and watch their other students compete, I thought would be a great way for, just to build some community and opportunity for kids to sort of see things and be more involved without having to worry about the cost. So that was one of the suggestions I had, I guess, last fall as I was talking with Barb about some ideas. We didn't have a dollar amount around that.
I have, I have one now. So and looking at, again, rev, so this is revenue to date, student ticket sales are $19,000. So that would be another possibility. We also sell an all-sports pass for $50, so that students could just use that all-sports pass. And all-sports passes, that's 20, we've sold $2,800.
Those, so can you use those at a high school league?
At a home, they would have to be home, non-section games, right?
Non-section, okay.
So one of the things, I did ask the question about, do, you know, do other schools do this? And the conversation is that when students purchase a ticket or a pass, there's an additional level of accountability. You have some skin in the game when you're going for that. Whereas if you don't, then it, you can drop in, you can leave. Whereas if you don't, then it, you can drop in, you can leave, you know, like, there's just not the same level of, level of accountability to coming to. So it become, in some schools, that I had found that it became more of a supervision issue by not having a small fee to come in. Our neighboring schools do charge for home games, except for White Bear Lake. That was the only one that does not charge for students for home games. Others, our other neighbors do. It was also recommended that if we did do something like this, there would be an, need to be an increase in supervision. So we might need to hire someone else to help with supervision of students as well, just because that has been the experience of having more students come to games when they're not, you know, just when it's something where they can kind of hang out. And then the last thing that we needed to just highlight in this, and I know I'm, I'm giving you all the why nots and I'm sorry about that, but I just want us to be really clear. It sounds, the idea of having more kids cheer on our students is, would be awesome. And we do want that, we want more kids to access our games. And we're also, it's, it's our nature as administrators to, to kind of think about security and student safety and, and all of that. And if you've ever had to work at a, at, be in charge of students at a homecoming game, you'd understand, especially the Zephyr Zone. Anyway, there, I mean, there have been some, some incidents at, at high school games that are student, student conduct incidents that have been concerning at various times. And so that's, that's our nature is to think about, about that, that aspect. And so I want us to be, be mindful of that if that's the direction we go. So it's, it's not just a revenue situation, it's also a student supervision issue for us as well. At any rate, all of these are part of the conversation, I think, when we talk about activities, whether it's the increase in fees, if we do want to change, because we do count on the revenue from ticket sales as well. So.
I have a couple of questions on that. So with the senior, well, here's my first question. My first question is, what is the age for the seniors? I mean.
I don't remember if it's Director Anderson, do you know the age of the, what age is the Golden? What? Fifty-five can get a Golden, no, I don't, is it fifty-five? Well, all right. Yeah, I think it's a little older than that. I think it's a little.
Okay, well, I, I guess one of the things that I, I feel like, I think I've heard is that many of our neighboring districts do offer that as that free admittance for seniors, correct? Because there's kind of two topics we're talking about, the seniors and.
Some do, I wouldn't say many.
Resident seniors or all seniors?
I think all, I could be wrong.
There are, there are some that do all. That is true.
It might cause trouble too, though.
And I don't feel like we need to do the same kind of supervision, so I'm not worried about that part.
So I do, I do really like the idea of, you know, expanding the offering for seniors besides just in district because we have a large percentage of families that open enroll to our district. And so giving them the opportunity to come to our games, I think, is great. Is that reflected here, though, in any of these revenue adjustments?
No. No, we have not, this is a discussion.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah. Sorry, the second, can I ask the second part of the question? The second part of the question on the student side, the student, the student piece, that is, right now, the pass is the only option for like, does that include? A discount, okay. Otherwise, it's just the GoFan rate or whatever we use, that GoFan.
Five dollars.
Okay.
Or all-sports pass is fifty dollars. And we do have, oh, do you have a number? Sixty? Yeah. And we do have, first, we do have students who receive that all-sports pass as scholarship, under a scholarship as well. So there are students that the counselors give the, we have some need-based all-sports passes. Yep.
Does the, above sixty, if you have, if the seniors in for free, would they still have to go through the app to acquire a ticket even if there was no cost?
Logistics, I do not know.
So under the new policy, if it was any senior from out town.
They would show an ID.
Show an ID, okay.
Oh, it's similar to like staff who can show an ID. I mean, they would just show an ID.
I think that's, I think that's a great idea, even just practically. I have seen grandparents standing outside of the fences, trying to get their phones to work on some of these things. So I think that would also be a great alternative for them. I know we haven't made any other revenue adjustments here, so I wanted to ask you. I know, and I texted Barbara with this earlier, our assumptions for next year's projections was two-point-five-five percent. And it sounds like the number came in at.
Yeah, the most current, the, the recent ones in this one, yeah, it's two-point-seven-four.
This ought to reflect.
Yes, yeah.
The money that we'll get from the state.
How much was that difference in dollars?
About roughly, little below sixty thousand dollars.
Sixty thousand, okay. And what is eighteen, because we're, I think the fund balance was eight-point-one-eight percent? What's that, what is, sorry, what's eighteen basis points worth of the remaining fund to the minimum?
Not on my phone on. Yeah, maybe you can do that if you have your phone. I don't, my phone, I could grab my phone. Your, so I just want to clarify, your question is how much room?
Correct. How much cushion is there?
But I don't know if that's accurate.
Yeah, I would, I would say.
Fifty million dollar.
Close, yeah, that would be close, yeah. It's not a lot of room, yeah.
Director Donna?
Regarding the fees, so help me understand again, so we, right now, we charge students six bucks, right?
I had five written down, you said six, seven, I don't know.
So currently, we charge students and currently we charge, and how much does that represent in total revenue? Nineteen thousand bucks?
At, at this point, revenue to date, I have nineteen thousand one hundred fifty-six.
That's for this academic year?
Yes, for this year, this school year.
And it will go higher than twenty thousand because we're not even to the end.
And then for seniors, we currently charge seniors?
It was about ten thousand dollars in revenue. Approximately, is, was his estimate for the year.
And these revenue adjustments do not account for any of that if those were to be adjusted?
Would we need to find that thirty thousand somewhere else? Do we have to make another cut, cut, or do we have just enough?
Well, a couple of things, so does that mean you're, so I'd like, I'd really like us to talk about, about the student one. I'll just tell you, that's not our recommendation at all. Like I, the senior one, the senior citizens, I understand that one. And the, the student, I'd want to have more conversation if that's really the way you want to go because we'd, I'd also want to put in there that we would want to look at our supervision as well. So I just need you to know that one.
And what do seniors currently pay? I don't remember. Anyone know? What do seniors currently pay, anyone know?
Pay right now, do you know?
I, I do.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, student, students and, students and seniors are the same at five because I buy my data ticket for everything too.
And what was, do we, what's the origin of the, the wanting to adjust seniors? I've never heard an issue with that before.
We got that feedback, a couple of board members got that feedback via email and then it was also on our, via social media as well. Something they, and I said that we would consider it in the large picture of all budget.
Okay, thank you.
We don't necessarily have to decide that today, but because this is the first time we're discussing it. But I wanted to, as we thought about the other adjustments, I thought we should talk about these as well because it is part of the big picture with activity revenue.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Did I miss, did you say how many Golden passes were requested or handed out this school year?
I'm seeing not very many is the number I have. That were requested. Maybe twenty.
Okay, thanks.
We could potentially do better at putting that out there.
So the student piece, just at first glance, obviously, this is the first time we've heard of this. I would say it seems to me there's some concerns over that. And, and I would say that seems like a supervision issue and that ultimately seems like a cost issue in a time when we're going through budget revisions. My first opinion on that would be maybe this isn't the correct time. Because if this isn't reflected in what we're already seeing in, in the proposed budget. And then secondly, even though I think the senior piece is also valid, I think that that's a valid piece, I guess, without it being reflected here, I would hate to see additional cuts made at this point when we're talking about classroom cuts and all sorts of cuts across the board, across the district.
That one, I mean, I, I would suggest that we, this is the first time, we typically don't vote on something the first time it's shown up. So that, I needed to give it to you because we were talking about increase, we're talking about activity fees and it's related. I'm not recommending that you vote on this, on this tonight, but I wanted you to have that as a thought as we talk about this. That was really my intention of bringing it up tonight.
I think we do need to point out, there's a five percent increase in activity fees, which is lower than the twenty percent you had last time. But we need to talk about that because I think a lot of us expressed concerns about it, so.
That was the other thing that we, we still have it sitting in there, but, and, and that was, again, one, because it hadn't been increased in a long time, there was the recommendation to just increase it slightly so that we don't have a situation where down the road, we have to make a significant jump. So that was, that was it. And again, if you feel like that needs to come off altogether, that's okay too. We can work with that. I just wanted to put it out there one more time for a conversation.
I have a question for you, just reflecting on the fact that our budget moved by two hundred thousand dollars between now and the end of the year. Is it important that we solve a hundred percent dollar for dollar for next year? Or is there a, a level of cushion that we could solve for ninety-five percent of it or ninety-seven percent and assume that there's enough volatility and movement in the assumptions?
Yeah, so first, this is a budget. And you're, you're going to see this thing, you're going to see this thing change as we get closer to June. You're going to see reports on a monthly basis and you're going to, you're going to see those numbers change. So I, right, I, I don't, you know, you don't have, and I think like Barb says, it's good to maybe mull it over before you take action. But on ten thousand dollars, I mean, right, you know, it's, it's something we can, we can work with. But again, it's, it's more so just looking at, making sure we're, we're all understanding the impact of any of those decisions kind of longer term.
But I want to be clear, we are taking a vote tonight. So if people don't want to do any increases, then this needs to be amended. So I just want to make sure we're all understanding what we're, the business at hand.
If you'd like us to pull that five percent increase, we could pull that, you could vote again. And then the next time you would be voting, truthfully, is going to be on the preliminary budget, which you, you know, at this point, we're far enough along that we're working with what we have and you'll vote on the budget again.
Donna?
Speak, that's a good point that Director Whitson made. But with respect to, you know, I understand, respect to the fees again, you know, it's, it's fourteen thousand dollars. But to me, it's more the principle, the fact that we haven't increased activity fees for several years. And I've seen too many times, we're not talking a lot of money, but five years from now, if we continue not to increase them, we might be in a position where something like this is a lot of money. I mean, I would even consider, we need to consider pegging our costs to inflation, certain areas of, certain areas of our budget. So on principle, I, I'm support, I support an increase in the activity fees, simply on principle that we have to, we have to really look at the cost of inflation. They have, we haven't done this for several years. And I don't want to get in a spot five years from now where, you know, fourteen thousand is now fifty thousand. So that's just my two cents. I'm, I'm supportive of all the adjustments that have been made here tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was going to say something similar in the fact that I wasn't in favor of the twenty percent. I felt like that was going to hit families pretty steep. Especially you think of kids who are involved in multiple activities. But I think that at the five percent, it seems like keeping pace with inflation and rising cost of things, it makes sense for us to be realistic versus all of a sudden, we're three to five years from now and then we're in a bad place. So five percent seems very livable. And so thank you for saying that, Director Donna.
Director Domon. And Director Peterson.
Oh, thank you. I also can live with the five, I could not stomach anything higher, thank you.
Director Whitson?
When we looked at our, sort of the comp set of our activity fees in the area, we're, we're already pretty high, correct? Is that right? I was probably, my position was, I felt like if we were fundamentally hired on a per-student basis, I would, I'd be happy waiting for a long time until we felt like our fees were in the same range as our neighbors, right? To let them catch up to us and then sort of feel like we have more justification. So I would be, I would be in favor of holding off until we felt like our fees were on parity with our neighbors' fees. If, if we feel like that's the appropriate way to measure the cost of those activities for our district compared to those districts.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the vote as is.
Second.
By Director Peterson for approval of the budget reduction updates for 2025, 2026. Any further discussion?
May I just make one comment? You'll see that second bullet, I was going to just point out, we heard a lot of feedback about our current seventh grade class sizes this year based on, you know, surprised by, we got surprised over the summer by how many new residents moved in. And so that pushed our seventh grade class sizes up. We saw that we had enough additional residents and open enrollment to be able to add that eighth grade class, that eighth grade section. When we add that eighth grade section, that's bringing, that's actually, even though we have open enrollment and resident enrollment, it's actually bringing those class sizes down because it's not so many new, new, new students that it would increase. So I just want to make that clear that we are up in terms of number of students in eighth grade for next year, but by adding that section, our class sizes are coming down. And I know that was a concern for people this school year, so I wanted to just highlight that as part of the adjustment.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion?
Are we, and we're voting on a hundred percent of the revenue and expense?
As it's, as it's listed. Okay.
Director Domon? Director Peterson?
Aye.
Director Donna?
Aye.
Director Regan?
Aye.
Director Whitson?
Aye.
And I'm Chair Stowe.
Aye, motion carries. Hey, thank you all. Okay, thank you all. Good discussion, thank you, Tim. Now we'll go to our final reading of policies.
Okay, and so for this, this is our final reading. I haven't, once again, I haven't heard anything. We haven't had any comments since the original, since we started this conversation back however many meetings ago that was. So I am just recommending that we approve these policies in this final reading.
And I'll just echo that this is the third reading, meaning this is the third meeting that we have had these before us, so I think we've discussed all the issues. So can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Director Donna.
Director Domon.
Aye.
Director Peterson.
Aye.
Director Donna.
Aye.
Director Regan, aye. Director Whitson.
Aye.
Director Stout.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, school board committee reports. We'll start with AMSD. Director Donna.
I believe Superintendent Duffin gave my report, so, thank you.
We did together. Okay, okay, thank you. And now for the MAF report.
I do not have a meeting since we met last, however, I just wanted to remind everybody to make sure on your calendars for April 11th, there's a Zephyr Gala. You also got communication from Leslie about the school board contributing a basket to the gala as well. We have possibly landed on a theme of pickleball basket, pickleball themed basket. And so looking for your contribution to that, if you are willing. We hope that there'll be a lot of interest in our pickleball basket, since it's a.
Play a game with the board?
I mean, we could throw in that.
I nominate Ryan.
We could throw in a coupon of such, that maybe we could use Kate, the facilities or something to do a game over there with the basket winner or something. That's a great idea. But anyway, the supplies.
That might just drive the price down.
Or way up, it could drive it way up, you never know. I, I would volunteer for that, I think that sounds like fun.
Kelly and Ryan as our athletes.
So, yeah, so I need to start working on that basket rather quickly, since the gala's coming soon. So if you're willing to help contribute to the school board basket around pickleball, I think that's where we'll land. And that's all I have for an update around MAF. Looking forward to seeing you all at the gala.
MSBA update, Director Peterson.
Yes, my notes for that are what Barb had in our Sunday notes, or just go to the MSBA website, it is perfectly laid out, explained, bullet points, links, better than I could go through it right now. And the next, if you'd like to join the statewide Zoom, the next one's Tuesday, April 1st at 8:00 AM. And like I said, Barb has it all laid out in our notes from Sunday.
Okay, oh, Northeast Metro 916 Board, that's me. I have already shared to look for the upcoming dates of tours, and highly encourage you to do that. I've also shared the summary, which Leslie sends out. But I do want to point out, I met with the superintendent, and I did a tour of one of the buildings. And I just want to give a shout out to Tony Pierce, because we've done a lot of work with the, he, he's done a lot of work with 916, and they work really well together, and he's really done a great job for us. Really, we want to keep our, our students in our district. 916 supports us to do that. And then also, if there's students that, that go to one of their buildings, you know, that we, we, we make that happen. But, but the ultimate goal is to have the supports here in our own district, and he's done a great job doing that. Okay, other board reports.
Excuse me, Stacy, what time is the tour on Wednesday?
There's three different tours, so I will, I'll have Leslie send them out again.
Thank you. And since I'm on here, I'll do my gifted and talented, the advanced academics. It was just a meeting for anyone whose child was just identified this spring, so it was a get to know you and see what the program's all about. They met last week.
Okay, thank you. Director Whitson, did I see you?
Yeah. So this past week, I went to the PTO meeting at Wildwood, and I'd just like to say what a bunch of fun and enthusiastic moms and one dad that that group was, so I really enjoyed being there, that was great. Couple highlights, their financials look strong, and they're looking like they're going to end the year on budget. Couple neat events I should call out that they mentioned, there is a volunteer breakfast that happening this year on May 12th at the District Education Center. I think this is the first year they're doing a recognition just for the volunteers. There is a staff appreciation breakfast on May 8th. And of course, as, as Max has already said, as many of us, we need a little section called As Max Has Already Mentioned. Spring Fling is on May 16th from 5:00 to 8:00 at Wildwood. There'll be food trucks and activities, and it serves to be a wonderful fundraiser for the PTO.
Great, and I would like to point out that this was Drew's first board report.
Yes.
He did a great job, so, okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, can I, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Director Regan.
Second.
Second by Director Donna. All those in favor say aye.
Uh, Director.
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote, sorry.
Director Domon. Director Peterson.
I think she said aye. I saw her say aye.
Sorry, aye.
Aye.
Director Donna.
Aye.
Director Regan, aye. Director Whitson.
Aye.
Adam Chair Stout.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.